Okay, it's noon and I know everybody's busy and I'm sure we'll have some more people hop on later. But I want to welcome everybody on this nice snowy day. I'm personally hoping for a lot more snow before this snows over. And I'd like to thank the commissioners and all of you for your time to attend our little update here. Both Judy Edmonds, myself and Margie Gray will kind of monitor the chat. So you know, some of you submitted questions, some earlier than this morning. And I sent those to the commissioners so that they might have a little bit of time to see what they are. So our recording will be up on the website hopefully later today. So anybody who couldn't watch it, you can tell them to go there. And what I'd like to do is have the commissioners kind of give us an update on their particular areas of responsibility and what's happened since our last update about a year ago. And then you can, as they go, you can put questions in the chat. If your question doesn't get asked, it means that we've already sent that to the commissioners and/or they have answered it in their presentation. There. So with all that, we will ask you all to mute yourselves. You can put on video or not. And then on your view, if you want to do speaker view, we can, you can do that. And Greg, as the chair, I'll let you just go ahead and start with what our latest update is from the chair of the commissioners. And before we go, I just want to thank you all again for your public service. I know how much time it takes. Greg would rather be fishing. He would probably be running. Rusty would be with his grandkids. But anyway, thank you. All right, Greg.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks everyone for joining today. This is always a kind of an interesting hour of the year, just to sort of pull ourselves together and talk about some big picture things like this. And I think, you know, what I would start with is really not very different from what I probably started with last year, which is just, I'll add a year on to it. It's been two and a half years of fairly extraordinary circumstances when you consider the Decker Fire in the southern end of the county. And just as we were sort of segueing into post-fire projects and, you know, trying to, trying to learn what we could from that experience and everything. Here came a little virus called COVID-19 and just really, really threw us for a loop. So I think, you know, these are things that we couldn't have prevented and we just had to respond. But you know, regarding the fire, I think that's been a great example of turning adversity into motivation. We, we have a 44 member Forest Health Council that was already working on a new community wildfire protection plan. But I think we've all taken a lot of urgency and motivation from the Decker Fire. If not the one up in the Buffalo Peaks and the one at Hayden Pass. And so as we go to implement that community wildfire protection plan, we've already treated 3,074 acres. There's 21,000 acres of both public and private land that's in the, in the planning pipeline and then in the NEPA process pipeline. We've had 1,637 landowners take positive action on their own property. And that has helped contribute to the designation of five firewise communities in our county. And perhaps most remarkably, we've raised over $19 million for our forest health and wildfire mitigation efforts. So our community wildfire protection plan is getting national attention now. And it's, it's really heartening to see because it was a very a great collaborative process that went into that. I'm very proud of just everybody involved in that sort of forest space being pulling together on this and coming up with something that really prioritizes treatment. I think any plan, be it this plan, our outdoor rec plan, the comp plan, future sustainability or strategic plans, they, they need to have a strong prioritization element to them or they're very hard to implement. You just, you have a lot of different things that are, you know, of benefit, but you, you can't do them all. And it's just hard to sort of focus your energy. So my hats are really off to that team. They, they did a great job of laying that out and we're working hard to implement it on, on COVID-19. You know, that obviously is, is a worldwide challenge that we faced. We didn't have control over our own destiny necessarily, but I do, do think that our, our public health department has been just, just fantastic and really have never flinched and have just stayed the course with really, I think, you know, heartfelt and kind compassionate, but firm advice to our community. When that was called for and more rigorous kind of regulatory type advice when necessary. And I also feel that when we pulled together many of the leaders around the county to kind of help us navigate those early days of the pandemic that gave us that gave us the opportunity to kind of bring that group together and develop and strengthen the relationships throughout the municipalities, county agencies and school districts and the small business community. And that stood us really good stead throughout that difficult period of the pandemic, but continues to be really helpful to us. And I think we're seeing it in a lot of different ways as we approach different controversial challenges within the county. And then through all of this, and perhaps most unexpectedly during a pandemic is we saw a lot of growth. I mean, everybody has seen it. Everyone has felt it. Our sales tax was up over 13% for, for 2021. Visitation was up even in the worst part of the pandemic. And of course there's building and you, you saw the questions that were asked. There's been, building has increased. There's more pressure on our public lands. And there's frankly, pressure on agriculture as a result of that too. And so really trying to work to, to address those pressures and to make sure that we're able to protect those elements of our county that really have what been what's drawn many of us here or kept us here in the county. I think, you know, we've overhauled our legal team. Not by choice, but I think it's turned out really well. Got a great, great team working now. We're working on some succession planning in the administration. Or administrative offices. And we've got two new buildings that are about to get started. One, an expansion of the Salida County Offices and another one, a sheriff and EMS building up north. So balancing land use, protecting our natural environment, and then trying to encourage civility and citizen participation, I think are kind of big themes that, that I see and have been dealing with since we last talked. Thanks.
Great. Excellent. So, all right, Rusty, we'll let you go next.
All right. Thank you. Just to dive into some of the committees that I'm on, the Chaffey County Fair Board and the fairgrounds. We were able to purchase some land decent to the fairgrounds. That land is a building and a couple of an office building and a couple of storage buildings that we're going to integrate into the fairgrounds. And with that, the, we have a team working on an updated master plan for the fairgrounds, which also includes the 80 plus acres that the county owns to the north. So that's a, that's an exciting development. We're working on designs and will be working with our county engineer to, to build bathrooms at the north building, which right now is bathroomless. I guess you have to go outside and, and use the porta potty, which is kind of hard on a lot of people. So we'll be getting new bathrooms inside at the north building along with now there's heat there. So people can, can enjoy that building more often. The fair board is planning on a full scale Chaffey County Fair this year. So that's exciting to them. They're also planning on a monster truck show along with one other big fundraiser. So they're excited and really working hard. So I appreciate all them volunteers that make up our Chaffey County Fair Board. And then finally, at the fair, at the fairgrounds, Mickey Hodge, our activities director continues to schedule a tremendous amount of activities up there for this year. So as long as our Omicron virus continues to slide downhill, things look real good out there and real exciting. Also, I'm, I'm part of the Southern Colorado Economic Development District. And the district this past year actually received almost one and a half million dollars worth of grants to do different oh, studies, hire two or three people to, that are closer to each county. The districts may made up of, I think, 11 total counties from Lake County cleared to the Kansas border in the Arkansas Valley here. And we're, we'll be hiring a, a broadband director. And he'll be a guide or an asset to any of the counties that are interested in, in bringing better broadband to their county or their locations. Whether it's a combination of county, city, district, whatever your entity might be trying to get better broadband to, to our area. We completed the district, the Economic Development District completed what we call the SEDS, C E D S, which is Economic Development Strategies. What, what that is, 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 well, I'll, I'll just refer basically to Chaffey County. Potential projects that could require federal funding will be available for federal funding. As long as those projects are listed on this list of, of oh, potential projects that could happen. And just an example, one of the successful ones was the Salida Sewer Plant. It was a big dollar project and received some great funding from the federal government. Another possible project that looks like it's going to be needed in the future is an increased or a larger sewer line between Poncha and Salida. And then of course, all the way to the sewer plant. Those are the kind of projects that are on, on this list. And it makes federal funds available for those projects, but it does have to be on this list. Let's see. I'm also on the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. We just recently hired a new executive director. Our past executive director moved to Arizona. As I look outside, I guess I don't have to wonder why sometimes, but, but that's good. And the Area Agency on Aging, part of the Council of Governments is also working on a grant to build a new facility or renovate a facility in the Salida area. So that's a, that's a potential project that might just go through. And then of course, always working to get more section eight housing to our county. Of course, our rents are just a little bit outside the guidelines for, for what they pay for rents, but they're working on it. The Chaffey County Visitors Bureau. Scott Peterson and the Visitors Bureau and other group of volunteers doing a great job marketing Chaffey County. I mean, they've won awards. They're doing, doing great things for the county. Their focus though is right now is turning a little bit in order to provide a quality rather than a quantity tourism effort. And, and as well as more of a sustainable tourism. So they're trying to focus a little more on making the visits quality and sustainable rather than just pushing for quantity. And if you're familiar with House Bill, I think it's 1177. The commissioners are pushing to get the state legislature to allow local entities a little more flexibility on how the Chaffey County Visitor Bureau fundings can be spent. So that, that's, that's going to be an exciting push. And, and I really like the focus that they're working on as far as quality and sustainability. And then finally, on the Salida Airport Board, which is an IGA intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Salida. A lot has been happening out there. They have actually sold their last land lease space. And all this land available currently has been taken up by airport hangars. So the only way that they're going to be able to grow now, and there we're working on that is to extend the runway to the east, which will open up another, I think, six to eight acres. But of course, you know how expensive runways can be. And Zach out at the airport's doing a great job along with the rest of the staff. And I think that's about it. Oh, one more exciting thing at the airport, if you're familiar with it, to the east of the terminal, it was an old cinder block hangar. And the county was, and city was able to buy out the remainder of the 20-year lease on that. So we have, we have control over that location and, and plans to really renovate that and make it a much more desirable terminal and storage space for county and city equipment and a lot, lot more flexibility. And that's about it. I think Greg kind of covered sales taxes, the new facilities in the works.
That's great. Can, um, yeah, I have some questions for later, but excellent. You guys are doing awesome. Okay, Keith, you're up.
Okay. Thank you very much. And those of you who know me know that I take kind of a big picture strategic view of things and then work down from there. That's my disposition and it's lasted well so far. So I'm not going to fight it. Looking at things we have accomplished recently, of course, one of the bigger things that we've done in the past year, 18 months is we have had the comp plan approved, the new master plan approved by the Planning Commission. And lots of other efforts flow out from that. One of the big ones which we have embarked on now is the land use code update. And I know that has been of major interest to the public for many years and trying to resolve the disconnect between the vision that has been espoused in the comprehensive plan for many years. And what the land use code makes easy and what it makes challenging to do. And we're trying to get those harmonized. It's not going to be a rapid process. So we ask for your patience and we ask for your involvement and your engagement to, to make sure that it reflects what the community's values are. As with all land use decisions, it is a very tough challenge to balance property rights with community vision and planning and, and prudence. So we definitely need that. So that's the land use code. Another major initiative that we have begun is a sustainable development plan. Now I want to take this opportunity to describe what a sustainable development plan is like. It isn't focused strictly on environmentalism or ecology, the way that some people might think. It addresses issues like equity, like transportation, like education and training for our workforce, like housing, like clean air and water, like affordable and clean energy for all of our residents. So they can afford to live here. In all about 17 different goal areas to work on to make sure that our community is truly sustainable and not coming apart at the seams, even the way that we discuss topics with each other so that people aren't intimidated and feel like that they are unwelcome to share their voices and their opinions. So that's the Sustainable Development Plan. And then finally, in one that is more inward looking at county government is our strategic plan. This is the first one that we've ever had as a county government. And most of you who are involved in any sort of organization know that you have to have a strategic plan that communicates your vision. It has agreed upon contracts in there about how you work internally. And overall objectives about how we increase our relevance and display our purpose to our citizens and to our residents. So those are three big initiatives that, that I'm keeping a keen eye on. Land Use Code Update, Sustainable Development Plan and our strategic plan. And have to thank our staff for all the work that they've done on getting these three things off the starting line. And then there's a fourth thing that I think we really need to address in an urgent way. And that is hiring somebody similar to what SCED has that Rusty mentioned to evaluate all these programs coming out of coronavirus relief funds, the ARPA dollars, the IIJA, the Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act. And whatever components come down from the Build Back Better program, because these are historic opportunities. These aren't generational. These are across several generational opportunities for us to advance what we have here. There's all sorts of money available. 1.2 trillion dollars just in the IIJA. And as, as much as we would like, it isn't discreetly compartmentalized. There are lots of things that go across programmatic boundaries like transportation, like water, like broadband. There's, there's money available in a lot of different ways and none of us in the county have either the expertise, the time or the bandwidth to really manage these and make sure that we're not missing out on opportunities. So that is something that, that, you know, I've been very forthcoming about what I think we need to do on this front. And that is an effort that I think we really need to get behind or else we are in grave danger of missing out on some historic level opportunities. So now taking it down a step, areas that are in my issues portfolio under a broad heading, transportation. I'm the liaison to the county's Transportation Advisory Board. I'm the vice chair of the San Luis Valley Transportation Planning Region, our TPR. And consequently, I'm our state, I'm our, I'm our representative from the TPR to our statewide Transportation Advisory Committee or the STACK. I also represent the county government on the stage and rail trail partnership and some other transportation initiatives here in the county. Another broad heading is legislation and networking. I'm our liaison to Colorado Counties Incorporated. I serve on several of our legislative steering committees. And I chair the Public Land Steering Committee. And consequently, I'm on our public lands traveling team where I just visited the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington DC. And was in lots of different work sessions and committees there. And down, I'm also reaching out to our legislative delegation at the state and national levels. And I'm also beginning to establish relationships with our new districts or who may be representing us in our new districts. I had a great phone conversation with Julie McCluskey this morning. Who, when the new State House District comes into play, she'll be District 13, assuming she gets reelected in the fall. Or whoever is our new representative in House District 13. And we had a good conversation there. And then broader topics, areas of interest, generally speaking, community development and leadership and organizational effectiveness. Those are some of the areas that I take a keen interest in and work on all up and down the policy level. And everything else, my philosophy is let's give broad guidance. Let's give mission sorts of objective, goal oriented guidance and directives to the staff. And then let the staff run with it and empower the staff so that they can actually make these things happen. And for us to take a broader view, look out at the horizon, look out in the out years and try to position the county for success in the future.
Great. Okay. Um, I know we've had some specific questions and Judy, do you see something in the chat that kind of is a follow-up? All right. Well, she's looking, go ahead.
Someone has asked, are there any transportation federal funds that can apply, that we can apply for to help establish a walking biking lane on County Road 350?
Let me take that. That's an excellent question. And yes, there are, and there are probably sources of funds that we have not yet identified in some of these relief bills that are coming downstream. One of the things that I did early on, I think it was back when ARPA was passed and certainly reiterated when the Infrastructure and Investment Act was passed was I sent a list of projects that have already been identified to our CDOT Region Five people who are headquartered down in Durango and also to the state level. And some of these are things like making sure that we have an integrated all weather, multi-user trails network that integrates our wildlands trails which Salida Mountain Trails and BV Single Track Coalition and others have done an outstanding job of developing and maintaining, but that knits those together and makes all weather trails safe and usable for everyone. And they're also seen and used as a part of our transportation system, that they get cars off the road, that they get people transporting themselves in an active manner, which benefits their health and their wellbeing and their emotional state. So yeah, we're going to be looking for every opportunity, every possible opportunity to do that. And Crossman 350 is one of the prime areas that's desperately needed. And Margie, I know you know Bob has done a great amount of work on that. We've got to address right of way issues and some other things up and down through there to make that happen. So it's not a small job, but it's one that I think we're up to. If we harness all of our energy, go for it.
Thank you. So this is also on transportation and maybe Rusty's economic list. Two questions. Is that list final already, Rusty? Or can things be still added to that?
The SEDS list from the Economic Development District is final. It is available to view through their website. S, again, S C E D D.
Okay. And
I think we were very flexible on how we worded it too. So if it deals with water, we can squeeze water projects into it. If it deals with broadband, we can squeeze different types of broadband projects into it.
How about the road to Ruby Mountain? Is that anywhere?
Roads, uh, roads. And sounds, I'd say no.
Is that anywhere on anything for transportation or whatever? Keith, or something?
Yes, federal money and a lot of the big projects, especially where they involve an intersection with a US numbered highway like 50 to 8524. Or a state highway like 291. Those have to be coordinated with CDOT and those are, many of them are already programmed, like the intersection in Poncha Springs, like the 29150 intersection on the eastern edge of Salida. And we're looking at things like the Steel Drive, 24 intersection just south of BV and trying to establish a clear gateway into the town of Buena Vista there. 384 up on the north end of town and some of those other things. Lots of these other local roads projects will have to identify probably through ARPA dollars, IIJA dollars and some of these other programs that we just have to have somebody with the time and the bandwidth and the coordination skills to drill down into these programs and identify the cost for it, write grants, do the liaison necessary to make them happen.
You mentioned road to Ruby Mountain. You're talking about County Road 300, right? I was
The one that goes by the old Nestle project.
Yeah. That's already in progress under the FLAT program, the Federal Lands Access Program. That project's been approved. And it will be under construction. That's the same program that we use to update the Cottonwood Pass Road Project, which we could have never done on our own.
Great. There. And Margie asked a question, and this might be of Rusty too, about the visitors bureau money. Could some of that money be directed to building a a wastewater dump for tourist campers in the north end of the county? The south end has one, but we don't.
What the House Bill is going to do is allow local entities the power to vote on how they want it spent. And the biggest reason where I was in favor of this is because it puts local control.
Right.
What with the vote of the people locally. So it allows local entities to vote how they want that money spent rather than being purely a state statute.
Right. What is happening with the Chaffey County Health Report? The status of that? Greg, you probably know.
Are you talking about the data dashboard that we have for COVID-19?
I'm not sure. Carol Maravka asked me this.
Report.
It's
What's going on right now is I think a lot of people know. You know, we're seeing COVID numbers decline, particularly in terms of the severity, hospitalizations and deaths and things. And as we, as that is going on and we are allowing public health to maybe focus more of their energy on their ongoing long-term programs for health and wellbeing in our county and stepping back a little bit. Not at all entirely, but a bit from the urgency that we've been under for the last two years. We are, at the same time, finding that for one thing, it's harder to get the data, all of the data that we had on the data dashboard. And also we're finding that the data isn't as accurate because with the expansion in the availability of home test kits and then also the decline in their efficacy, it, it's really hard to have apples to apples numbers like we did earlier in the pandemic when we were kind of had good oversight and management on all the testing. So we are trying to maintain those data points that we think are most relevant and And, uh, keeping that available to everyone. But we also, at least for the time being, are starting to wind down some of the. Um, labor-intensive elements of the COVID reporting. And allowing public health to kind of recover and get back to their, their real mission while acknowledging that. None of us know where this is headed next. Hopefully it'll continue in a positive direction, but. Um, as Andrea has pointed out in numerous articles recently, I think. Um, this is a good time for everybody to kind of regroup and, and recover a bit. Uh, and take advantage of the coming warmer weather because. You know, you, you gotta restore yourself in case we do have another wave and we are. Pushed back into any kind of restrictions or just difficult times from an epidemiological perspective, but. Um, yeah, you will, you will see changes in our data dashboard and our, our, uh, situation report. Based in part on the availability of the, uh, quality information.
Greg, since you're up, here's another question that's for you. Um, would you please give an update on the proposal by Cassia? To build a senior living facility on the hospital campus?
Uh, okay, I, hmm. I can't give a very detailed update on that, partly because there are, um. There've been some negotiations going on that, you know, really can't talk about, but. Um, this is a proposal by a, uh, private entity there to, uh, potentially construct a. A, uh, assisted living facility on the hospital campus west of the hospital. Um, it's an expensive proposition. It's 29, $30 million. And, um. You know, we've, the county's had communications with the hospital. Um. But the funding element is, is, it's a heavy lift. And, um, frankly, I, I don't think it's a. I mean, I hate to say this, but when you're talking about that kind of money, I, I don't think it's a top priority for the county. Budget, uh, but we are looking at ways to try to. See if we can move this forward. Uh, maybe through more of, um. More of a community-wide taxing type effort than simply, um, asking. The big players like the county government, the hospital to, uh, come up with. These millions of dollars. So I guess the discussion is ongoing. Hospital is, is more the lead on that, but, um. That's, that's about all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. I just put in a hat, I know. What's being done? What's the latest update on affordable housing? In our county. And I think Keith said something that 1177. That some of those monies might be able to be used for affordable housing for tourist sector. Workers or I've seen all these apartments to the east of Salida and. Anything happening?
It's 1117, 1117.
Yeah, I got that.
In the, uh. In the, uh, chat. But yes, the language is, it's now said, is it approved, was approved out of the house and sent over to the Senate. Says that, uh, it can be used for, now it took out economic development writ large. And says workforce recruitment, management and development for housing and childcare for a, for the tourism-related workforce.
Great.
And so including seasonal workers. So I know the intent and the discussions are. That it's able to address our housing shortfalls for tourism-related, uh, seasonal workers and so on. So, and then once again, ARPA and IIJA, those are. Uh, some tremendous opportunities that are out there, transformational things, but. You know, are we sure that those are available to us or that there are programs there? We have to unpack a lot of it. There are, there's just a lot of things out there. And obviously we're going to have to make our own contribution somehow or another. But, um, it, it will definitely move the needle on our ability to address these issues.
Keith, there's another question about, um, housing. What are the parameters for Section 8 housing rents?
Oh gosh, I'd have to look those up. I don't remember. Rusty may be more familiar with them than I am. Uh, on the exact. Numbers, but, um. You know, that's a program that's been around a long time and it's, um, it's like, it's a voucher program. So I don't know. I'll, I'll plead ignorance on that one. I do not know, but I will find out.
Yeah, no, I don't know the specific details either. I know they take averages, uh, of rents and, uh, incomes and. And allow so much assistance to a two-bedroom, one-bedroom, whatever the. The, uh, apartment type. I, our house, uh, for rent is, but then again, the other problem is the availability of, uh. The actual rental units in our, in our area.
And you just, uh, and this is maybe an naive question, but can you just tell me what Section 8 housing is?
Oh, Section 8 Housing is a program through the COG funded by the state or no feds as well, but. It assists rent, uh, renters with their rent every month.
Okay, thank you.
For low income, yes. So, um, Sandy wanted to know if you could. Talk a little bit more, the status of the Chaffey County Sustainability Development Plan is there are people willing to work on it. But they haven't heard any things since the kickoff meeting in October. And I know I had some other questions that would go along without that in terms of. You know, renewable energy in Chaffey County. Recycling issue in Chaffey County. And then of course, there's the Sengar de Cristo. Rate change proposal issue. So that's a few things for you to, somebody to address.
Well, I'm happy to because it's, uh, that is one of my pet projects and it's a sustainable development plan. Uh, I guess the goal is sustainability. And then sometimes people ask, well, how's that differ from resiliency? A sustainable development plan is to prevent problems. A resiliency plan and program is to deal with problems after. They've happened and we hope that we don't have them happen. But as I mentioned, there are lots of gold areas under the Sustainable Development Program. And a Sustainable Development, uh, Plan. And those do address things like affordable and clean energy, clean air and water. Housing, transportation, equity issues, education and training for our workforce. Uh, lots of different things. We have been slow, uh. Slower than I would have hoped, uh, getting off the starting line on that. But, uh, our project manager is working hard on that and we do have a timeline. And expect to see some things coming out within the next couple of weeks because we established about a six-week deadline. Approaching six weeks ago. And we don't want to keep kicking the can like, okay, that's a 10-year project. And then eight years from now, people are still calling it a 10-year project. No, we don't want to do that. Uh, we've got to be action biased and, uh, and have a sense of urgency about doing this. So look for things to be coming down, down, uh. Um, the pike on that and some more information. And like everything else, we do. Welcome your input because we have a tremendous amount of expertise here in the county. People that are more knowledgeable about the details of these things. And, uh, I do appreciate your continuing questions about where we are on it because. That indicates interest and it indicates to me, uh, that we do need to get moving on this and, um. And, and we certainly will.
Okay. Uh, we had another question from Brett about, has the county considered hiring a code enforcement officer? Rather than sending an armed officer to deal with barking dogs, trash properties and that like, um. I know Buena Vista has a code enforcement officer. I don't think he's armed.
Yeah. So we've been looking at. Um. That type of a function. Um, I don't know that I. Even put the word officer on it, you know, it, because it's not, uh, we're not looking at it from a law enforcement perspective. So much as a problem-solving perspective and. Somebody who can, um, respond to complaints. I don't, I think that's generally how these types of programs work. You're not just out driving around looking for trouble, but. We're responding to, to actual complaints that people raise. Some of these, um, problems that come up though, they do require law enforcement. And I mean, we've seen that over and over. A lot of our toughest cases, um. We're not even allowed, able to send our kind of normal civilian staff in to, just to give them a notice of, uh. You know, that, that they need to clean something up or, uh, need to deal with a problem. And so. It, it's a tricky balancing act, but that is a function that, that we're working on, uh, right now. And again, I think. More of a, more of a problem-solving and, and proactive approach, I think could be. Could be helpful. Um, as mentioned, the, when these things get pretty bad. Uh, people become kind of intractable and, you know, it just, it, it's not good for anyone. But you know, we. Just to step back, you know, um, we do have, I can think of a lot of positions that we could add. Um, I can think of a lot of roles that we could. Uh, expand into at the county, but. It is really challenging. Anyone who's owned a business, I think, can relate to this, but you know, you. You've got to be careful adding positions. They, they always cost more than they appear to. And once you add them, they're difficult to ever, um. To ever cut. And you know, we've been enjoying a, really a fantastic. Period of economic growth during Keith and my terms in office, but. Gosh, the, the commissioners that came before us, um. They mostly dealt with just trying to keep the county solvent through the recession and trying to manage. Uh, the employee payroll through attrition and not fire anybody, but, um, it was quite a, a high-wire act for them. And so I am. I, I guess I feel this way. I think my colleagues do too. I know our administration does. It, we're, we're very circumspect about. Um. You know, questions of just adding, adding more staff. Um, in creating new areas of responsibility. Um, it's not that we won't do it, but I think it's not something you jump into.
And there is a question about, uh, thanks Greg. There's a question about, um, the land use code. Um, how will the land use code revision? Be structured to assure that the code will reflect what citizens say they want in the comp plan for. And an example would be, uh, residential development on small lots. Around existing communities instead of using up rural lands.
And I want to follow a little, follow up with that from another question that being it'll be at least a year or more before that land use code is. Done. How are we gonna, how's the county gonna prevent? How are we gonna do what the comp plan says they wanted? The county to do?
Before, I'm gonna jump in here right away if that's all right.
Sure.
Uh, you know, the, the land use code is not only there. Uh, for the benefit of the community, it's also the benefit of the landowner. Land use code protects private, private property rights. So to be able to balance the land use code with our views and. And the whim of the day or whatever it is. The land use code has to have good representation from all areas of the community. Every, most people think of just development and. Developers when they look at the land use code, but it, it consists of a lot more. Related to agricultural and, uh. And, um, and growth as well, but. I think that we do have to remember that it's there, not just to. Help with the community, but to protect the rights of the landowners.
Anybody else?
Well, I've got a couple of groups to lay on that. Part of my conversation with, uh. Representative McCluskey this morning and conversations I've had with, uh, Bob Rankin. Involve wildfire mitigation, wildfire preparedness, development in the back country and development in the wildland urban interface. And as we get these funds coming from the state. And federal level to help with wildfire mitigation, we can expect there are going to be some zoning. And building code requirements in there for us to take the money. Now, if we choose not to want that money. Or not to take it and just do whatever we want to and allow unfettered growth and development in the back country. Then, you know, that's our community's choice, but we have to understand. That we're not going to have the funding to do those programs and everything that we might otherwise want. It's just like. When you had a kid and you had, you gave them an allowance, you expected them to do certain chores around the house. Uh, to earn their allowance in some respect. So we have to be aware of that and we have to appreciate it. It has a cost. That little, little fire. Up in Breckenridge a couple of years ago was over a million dollars damage. And you look at the East Troublesome Fire. And some of these others, and of course, we all know about the Marshall Fire now down in the Front Range there. Uh, and that was an urban, an urbanized suburban area. Uh, the losses can be tremendous. So we need to be able to take a look at that. And while we do need to respect property rights. Uh, we need to communicate clearly to people what is allowable and what is not allowable. What is safe and what isn't safe and what will be an overall. Uh, unbearable cost to the community if we allow certain things. So back to the question about representation, uh, there will be a steering committee which some of you read about in the press recently, which. Instead of representing communities, I think it should represent. Uh, areas of interest primarily, and it can't be that every little stovepipe has one person on the board or else it gets too big and gets too unmanageable. But people that have a broad awareness of many of these different issues and can be a good advocate for, uh. Their point of view, their group's point of view, their community's point of view. And then also go back to that group and share what the board's thinking is. And then of course, lots of community outreach as we have established within Vision and the comp plan update and everything else. E-Even though. Uh, we tend to look at things many times. Top-down, I think what all three of us look at things to do is be grassroots up. Because without community buy-in, you can have the greatest plan in the world, but nobody's going to follow it. Nobody's going to appreciate and support it.
I'd like to add to that a little bit to Karen. Um. You know, this is a land use code update. We haven't had. Uh, I think a comprehensive one in quite a while. And yes, I think we want it to try to be, uh, we want it to be something that reflects. Bigger themes of the comp plan. But the comp plan is a highly aspirational document. And translating some of it into, um, kind of nuts and bolts, literally, um, is, is a challenge. And, um, may not be something that's easily done in a prescriptive fashion. So. We're, we're, I'm, I'm trying to really tune into the process and commit to the process and then. Let the process guide the product. But I think Rusty, you know, kind of alludes to a good point there that. Um. Property owners are, are entitled to a fair bit of continuity. In what the expectations are of them and what they have of us in terms of what's. What's, um, what they can viably do with their property. And we need to retain as much freedom and flexibility as we can. Um, for them. I mean, I think that's just fundamental. And so for me, I think there's going to be things that we need to. Um, we're going to need to adjust, need to change to sort of reflect the changes that have happened in our county. And to some extent, the expectations of people in this county. Um, and then I also think, and I, I've taken some. Uh, negative comments, I guess, from people over this in the past, but I still stand by it. I think everything we can do. From an, from an incentive-driven perspective. Is, is really important and really positive. And we have been successful at that in the past. I admit that there's a certain amount of hazard. Um, in working from that sort of a stance, but. I do think that some of the best outcomes are possible. When you find ways to encourage people to be creative and do things that are reflective of community values. Rather than trying to dictate that to people. And so I'm going to continue to look for ways to incentivize. What I think probably many people on this call would agree upon would be more optimal, uh, growth and development patterns. But we, you know, we, it's, it's a, uh. I'm looking forward to the conversation and figuring out maybe, uh, based on community input, ways we can do that that will, um. You know, ultimately lead to a more beneficial future.
Great. Um. The big thing in the room is that you guys have mentioned sustainability. And affordable energy, but do the commissioners, are they involved with the Sengar de Cristo rate changes or have an opinion?
Opinion, because I hate to see them. Um. What would you call it? Uh, negat- negatively. Uh, affect people generating their own power? That, that's a big negative to me personally. As far as rate increases. As far as rate increases, I think you just have to look at our economy. I mean, I've gotten two XL electrical power increases. My natural gas prices have gone up. I live in town. Uh, we're in a state of inflation and I don't see it going anywhere. So I, I think the biggest frustration to me, I don't think the commissioners of the county should get in the middle of it. I think we'd be throwing a big wrench into the middle of it. But, uh, we're living in a state of inflation right now.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'll jump. Uh, a few weeks ago, we had a meeting, I discussed this about whether, uh, my colleagues wanted to submit a letter to the Public Utilities Commission, even though the PUC, as I understand it, doesn't have jurisdiction over co-ops, um, expressing some areas of interest and areas of concern about the rate increase and about some of the nuances of the rating. I don't think many of us disagree with doing something like adding a premium on electricity for homes that are rarely occupied. What somebody I know calls a two-two-eight, two people for two weeks of the year at eight thousand square feet. But instead, the way some of this is structured, uh, you get a lower rate the more energy you use, which seems backwards to me. And if one of our interests and one of our sustainable development goals is cleaner and affordable energy for everyone, then we should be able to incentivize rooftop solar, which I got it, I'll full, full disclosure. Uh, and, and we enjoy it and we benefit from it and we board a lot of that electricity onto the grid. But the amount that, uh, solar power providers or solar power users are, are getting back in return, uh, under the original plan, I haven't looked at the new one recently, but, uh, it's likely to decrease. And I don't know, there's some, there's some things in there that I think are of our interest, but, uh, we as a group decided that we're not going to engage that way. Uh, but I am a member of the Sangre de Cristo Electric Association. Therefore I have a voice in the process and I will be, am engaged as an individual about my concerns and about some of these issues. And I know many of you are. And, uh, and I appreciate that. And like any other issue like this in a county of our size, a community of our size, I've got friends on both sides of the fence and I just hope that this doesn't rupture any friendships or relationships. But, um, you know, we have to be able to disagree and have constructive disagreement and conflict when the, when the time comes up. And I think this is one of those times.
You know, I, I think Keith has said a number of times, there's no free lunch, you know, when he talks about his rules of ecology and this is one of those times where I don't think anybody disputes the value, the, the benefit, the, um, you know, the, the long-term importance of developing solar energy and rooftop solar and net metering and, and all that seems to me to be moving in the right direction. But I talked to Paul Erickson, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but, uh, the costs of sort of subsidizing that to help expand it within the co-op's service area are being spread onto all of the rate payers. And, uh, including people who could never afford solar and have trouble even paying their bills each year, each month. And so this unbundling of the rate structure, uh, has allowed them, I think, to what they, with the, what the, uh, Sangre de Cristo Board, who, which is an elected board, believes is maybe a more equitable weight rate structure where people are, are being charged, uh, more fairly. And so for example, these homes that mostly sit empty, they cost an awful lot to serve, but they don't buy much electricity. By unbundling the electricity from the infrastructure costs, uh, you're able to shift more of the costs for the infrastructure to these folks. And unburden maybe the regular routine rate payers like all of us. Um, and more equitably shift that cost burden. And so, uh, I think there's, there's more going on at Sangre de Cristo in this conversation than just solar energy. It, it's about a more equitable rate structure, um, across the board. And I think the, the solar question is a really good one and it's definitely, um, brought a lot of passion to the table. Um, but I think it, my understanding of what they're trying to do is actually a lot broader than that, just that question. And, um, I, I think my position, and I think where we all ended up is that, you know, they have an elected board and those are the people that are accountable for their decisions to the public. And, um, yes, we can, we can weigh in with concerns and stuff, but they're the ones who are going to be making the decisions. And they're the ones responsible for that.
Okay. I think we have one more question and that is with all this money coming back down that Keith referred to, funding opportunities, does the county staff and structure, are they prepared to spend all that potential money?
No. And that's the reason why we need to hire someone who can really manage this on a daily basis and really study things and contact, uh, the right people, do inner cert, dinner net research uh, and look at things at a program level and identify projects that are ripe targets for using some of this money. And like I said earlier, some of these things cross project boundaries. So you have to compile money or stack money. And, and we need someone who can devote their attention to that and, uh, and implement some of these. Now at a staff level, at a, at a specific, uh, more discreet project management level, uh, once again, probably not, but it depends a lot on what the projects are. And there are many times that, you know, contractors can be hired to do some of these things, depending on the size of the, the road project. Say like if we did everything that we need to do with Crossman, that's beyond the scope of our roads and bridges department. So we could hire a contractor, would need to hire a contractor, some of the broadband projects that we need to do. That's clearly in the contractor realm. And some of the upgrades that we need to do for our broad broadband capacity in some of our government and community buildings, those would be contractor hires. But, uh, I think the entering argument on that or the, the, the prerequisite is to have somebody that can really drill down on these programs and make sure that we're taking advantage of everything we've got coming to us. And we're not the only county that's facing this. It's, it's all across the board. I mentioned to somebody in chat, we can pay for that position out of these program dollars and some of these other, uh, different things, we can do that. And there's likely to be more money coming for that because we're not alone. I know that, uh, Bob Rankin is thinking about trying to get something through the state legislature to help small rural counties. And this is one of those perverse sort of things. The people where the need is the greatest, like small rural counties, are the ones least equipped to take advantage of it. So who's going to get it? All the metro counties and the suburban counties, unless we do something. So, good question.
So Keith, what's the next step to get that, that person?
Well, we need to talk about it once again as the, as the county commission and, uh, and decide if this is something that we want to move forward with. And, you know, put some parameters on it, have a job description, uh, post it, do all those other sorts of things as we would as if we were hiring a land use code update consultant or, uh, a broadband. We do have a regional strategic broadband plan, so a lot of that is implementing a plan that we already have. Uh, same with some of our roads and, uh, trails programs and so forth. We've got, the vision is already there. Now we have an opportunity to capitalize on it and.
And can you, as a commission, the three of you, make the decision that this person needs to be hired and get the job done?
I certainly think so. I mean, I think that's within our purview. We do other, make other hiring decisions. And of course, you know, we would do it with advice and counsel from the staff and from our legal team and others and make sure that we're in compliance with what, uh, what the laws say and all those other sorts of things. But, uh, I see no reason why we couldn't do that. And I know other counties are, when that, that first coronavirus relief fund thing came out and counties and municipalities with over, I think it was five hundred thousand or whatever, got direct federal aid instead of it coming through the state like ours did. Douglas County or Jeffco or maybe two or three others, the first thing they did was hire three or four people to manage the program. That was the first thing they did. And so I think it's certainly understandable that we do that rather than be at the starting line when everybody else is going into the, you know, going into the backstretch.
Great. I don't see any other questions that we haven't really addressed. Some of you may have some more. You can always email your commissioners with specific questions on that. I think people are just really still concerned about, um, their electricity, about the land use program and about, uh, what the future of our county is going to look like and how people afford to live here. I mean, there've been some great new families and stuff that live here, that have moved here because of the remotabilities, but we don't want it to change too much. So. All right. Well, I want to thank you all, any of you folks who want to stay on to chat a little bit after this, that's fine. But again, thank you commissioners for your time and service and all the good work that you've done. And we know we're never going to satisfy everybody. So I'm going to stop the report, recording and then just stay on.
Thanks Karen.
Okay.